The meeting to order, please. Before we hear the two cases today, I have the guidelines by which this meeting is conducted. This is a public hearing and we are the zoning board of adjustments for Putnam County, Florida. We operate under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Land Development Code as amended. The primary responsibility of the board is to hear and decide appeals challenging final determinations made by the Planning and Development Services Department under the Land Development Code and to hear and act upon requests for variances, special use permits, nonconforming use determinations, and preliminary development plans under the Development Code, Land Development Code. We have, a variance is a relaxation of the requirements of the zoning code in a particular case where because of unusual circumstances, a literal enforcement of the zoning code would result in undue or unnecessary hardship. The zoning code permits us to authorize variances for height, size of structure, size of yards, and open spaces. If we grant a variance, we may impose reasonable condition on the use of the property which must be satisfied if the variance is to remain valid. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a variance are listed in Section 45-833 of the Land Development Code. A special use permit is special permission to use property in a fashion which the zoning classification of the property does not automatically permit. If we grant a special use permit, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property which must be satisfied if the special use permit is to remain valid. Unlike a change in the zoning classification, as a general rule, a special use permit applies only to a specific use requested in the application for a special use permit. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a special use permit are listed in Section 45-1083 of the Land Development Code. Procedurally, we will call this case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments and statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This board will be, this motion will be voted on by the board members and become our final order. Any decision made by this board can be appealed to the circuit court. However, any appeal must be filed within 30 days after the Board of Adjustments has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Okay, before the first case is heard, all those wishing to speak today must be sworn in, so will the notary please administer the oath.
This is an application for a sawmill where the wood is from trees grown on the site of the saw, of the, of the sawmill. It's in the agricultural district. The applicant is Frank Buckles. The location is 1289 State Road 19, Palatka. The future land use is urban reserve. The zoning district is agriculture. The background, uh, the property is zoned agriculture and contains 4.28 acres. The property is currently under code enforcement, case number 2021-00130, for operation of a sawmill using trees from other locations and for other several, several unpermitted buildings. The applicant is in the process of bringing the unpermitted buildings into compliance. The property is not designated as greenbelted as verified through the Putnam County Property Appraiser. The property is not shown to be within a special flood hazard area and, but there is a slight wetland located along the south mid to rear property line and will be further depicted in maps as shown. This is the aerial, the zoning district, agriculture, future land use. That is the location of the wetland area, that little bubble. The special use permit criteria. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets all the concurrency requirements. The subject property is located along a minor arterial classified roadway, State Road 19. The proposed sawmill activity requires that all wood be used in the operation be grown onsite, and the operator of the sawmill will be responsible for ensuring that all agricultural activities comply with the best management practices as provided in Policy A 1.4.9 and identical policy of E 1.3.5. The use is allowed as a special use within the zoning district. The section 45-72D2 of the Land Development Code specifically states that agricultural-related commercial uses referred to as commercial agricultural related in the LDC requires a special use permit to locate within the agricultural district. Upon approval of the special use permit, the sawmill will be required to undergo the development review process through which the additional improvements as well as the existing development would be, would demonstrate compliance with the development requirements in the Land Development Code. Special use would not adversely impact nor unduly restrict the enjoyment of permitted uses in the surrounding area. The surrounding parcels zoned agricultural contain single-family homes. The proposed sawmill provided that only site grown trees are to be used is not anticipated to have an adverse impact or undue restrictions based on the limited scale of the use. Staff has proposed conditions that are listed at the end that will mitigate for noise associated with the operation. The special use will not substantially diminish or impair property values in the area. The property is required to use only trees, again, grown on the site. The property is only 4.28 acres. The milling of wood would be limited to the trees, of course, again, existing onsite, and the scope being so limited doesn't, we don't anticipate major issues. Adequate access roads, onsite parking. The site will go through the development review process to ensure compliance with the LDC. Adequate measures have been taken to provide ingress and egress of the property. The current property has a residential-type driveway. It will have to go and be reviewed by DOT for the different, for the development, during the development review process. Adequate screening and buffering of the special use will be provided. The property abuts residentially zoned properties. Section 45-513, Table 703A, states a type 10A buffer is required along property lines which abut the agricultural district. Landscaping of any vehicular use areas or any kind of business-type things would be required to have, will be determined at development review. The special use will not, will not have any signs or exterior lighting. No signage is proposed and the lighting will be reviewed for compliance at the time of development review. There will be no undue risks to persons or persons from hazardous substances. Staff is not aware of any hazardous substance, substances proposed, sorry about that, for the sawmill operation. Staff has proposed a condition prohibiting the treatment of wood products with chromated copper arsenate preservatives normally associated with treated woods. This condition is proposed because the residential setting of the site is not considered appropriate for such an intense chemical process. More properly situated in, that would be more for an industrial-style zoning. The proposed special use will not adversely affect the general public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Putnam County. The proposed use as limited and conditioned by staff would be consistent with the urban reserve, future land use, and the agricultural zoning, and should not adversely affect the general public health, safety, welfare, or the residents of Putnam County. The applicant has requested a special use to allow a sawmill where wood is grown from tree, is from trees grown on the site in the ag district. Upon approval of the special use permit, the applicant will be required to go through development review process and meet all requirements set forth in Land Development Code and any conditions that may be added by the board. Staff recommends approval subject to these five conditions. As stipulated by the LDC 45-59, all trees used in the operation of the sawmill shall be grown and harvested on the subject 4.28 acre site. No additional wood material shall be allowed to be processed as part of the sawmill operation on the premises. Violation of this condition will result in the revocation of the special use permit. The impregnating and/or saturation of wood products on the subject site using chromated copper arsenate preservatives shall be prohibited. A 10-foot wide type A buffer incorporating components as described in Article 7 shall be installed along any residential property line adjacent to view of the sawmill operation. The action of cutting wood using mechanically operated saw shall be required to be contained within an enclosed building. And number five, all existing and future buildings on the site shall be properly permitted through the Department of, of Planning and Development Services prior to the commencement of the sawmill operation. The applicant is here for questions and if you have any questions of staff.
Do you have any questions for staff? I do. Okay, got a question for you. On the staff analysis under D and also it says that the milling of wood would be limited to the trees existing on the site and, and any additional trees that may be planted in the future. Okay, I noticed that there are a lot of logs, you know, the trees have already been cut. Are those going to be permitted to be sawn at that time?
I'm gonna address that.
No, in a minute. I'm asking staff.
If it's currently, anything that's currently on site, we are assuming that it came from site. So yes, anything that is currently sitting on the site today.
Okay, alright, just, and what type of buffer are you going to require? Because when I was out there, it, there was a house, I think on the left, and there was probably one on the right farther down. So are you going to require that they plant a fence? I mean, not plant a fence, but plant trees and/or put up a fence?
It, it would be of vegetation. It would be depending on when we go through the development review process, it may, may well be a fence or some sort of barrier.
Madam Chair, if I may address that, the type, the type 10A buffer currently allows for either a wood fence or vegetation. If, so, and that's condition number three in staff's recommended conditions. If the board desires to make that a more substantial buffer, you may do so by requiring an additional component in that buffer. But currently, the way we have the condition written, it's either six-foot evergreen vegetation or a six-foot fence along any area that's adjoining the structures that will be used for the sawmill.
Okay, the structure itself, because the structure sits way back in the back, so...
Correct, so...
There was a fence, so I couldn't get through the fence today, but, you know, it looked like that there was quite a bit of overgrowth in that, in that area, but...
Yes ma'am, so the, it would only have to be placed in the immediate area of the operation.
Oh, okay, so...
So it wouldn't be the entire property.
Okay. Right, any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, let's do a site visit roll call, please.
Earl Ballantyne?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Ed Killigrew?
Yes.
Linda Osborne?
Yes.
Mom West?
Yes.
I'm assuming the gentleman standing in front of us is Frank Buckles?
Ama'am.
Okay, would you please identify yourself, give us your name and address for the record?
Yes ma'am, Justin Morris, 180 Stokes Landing Road.
Justin, what was your last name?
Morris, M-O-R-R-I-S.
Alright.
Um, I want to make one adjustment to the things that she said there. She said the adjacent properties were residential. They are zoned ag both to the north and to the south of the subject property. They are not residential properties. Yes, they have a house on them, but according to the property search right here, it says the property to the north is ag zoning. So we are situated, we are agricultural, situated between two agriculturally zoned properties. So let me say, let me, let me start off with, my name's Justin Morris. I'm, Mr. Gary Buckles and Frank Buckles approached me back in March when they received their Mr. Gary passed away in June. Kind of dropped it all in Frank's lap to finish this up, and I'm helping them coordinate with it. I'm currently, I'm a building contractor, state certified building contractor. I've worked for the county for years as a building inspector, and I'm currently the building official for the town of Walaka. So they approached me because of my experience and expertise in having been in the codebook and been in, understanding interpretations of some of what's going on here, and they, they're just not familiar with it. So I'm helping them through this process. I understand gray areas in the code, and I understand that sometimes government officials, they're relatively indifferent because it's their job to just interpret what they see. And very often, it is very hard for people that are doing it for a living to back up on a stance once they establish a position. In my professional career, I have tried to the air on the side of what is most helpful to the people that I'm, I'm advocating for and that I am, I am trying to help. I'm hoping that's what happens here. We have here an issue of perceived noncompliance in that the Buckles have a portable bandsaw located on a piece of property. It's been there for almost 20 years. It is on a piece that has been family-owned since 1981 and has been continuously used. It's not used a lot. It's not, it's not a, it's not something that he is making a living there. But because they can, they can put the word sawmill on it, there's a, there's a, that's what they're going off of. So when, when I say sawmill, what the general public and what normal people, the people that put this code together, when they think sawmill, what they would think is a big saw blade, conveyor belts, trolleys that carry the wood, lots of high-production type work, truckloads of logs coming in, semi-trucks of lumber and whatnot going out. We have, in this county, two industrial-level sawmills. We have one, the East Palaca Sawmill on Turner Road in East Palaca, and the Mulch Plant on Highway 17 north of town, just before you get to the county line. Both of those are what you would expect to see when you say sawmill. They have large saws, they produce large volumes, they deal with a large number of truckloads of logs coming in and lumber going out. That's not what this is. This is a portable sawmill, a portable bandsaw. It is on a trailer that can be hooked to a vehicle and moved off-site in five minutes. It is a bandsaw powered by the equivalent of a lawnmower engine, a 25 or 30 horse Kohler engine, no different than what your neighbor has on their zero-turn mower. So this is not the industrial-strength sawmill that it's trying to get classified as. Both the East Palaca Sawmill and the sawmill at the Mulch Plant sit on agricultural property. I'm assuming since there was no response from, from zoning on, when I questioned them about the East Palaca Sawmill, that there's no, there's, has been no issue with the East Palaca Sawmill just because maybe it's been there for so long. But how, this board did issue special use permit in '05 to the Mulch Plant for their So it is understandable that you need a special use permit for a sawmill of that industrial strength, and we're, we're, we are in agreement that it can go in an agriculturally zoned property. But what Mr. Buckles has on a trailer, because of its limited scope and its limited abilities, it does not produce a lot of wood. It doesn't produce a lot of lumber. He's not, for the sake of argument, he's not really a commercial business there. Yes, he has sold a little bit of wood here and there, but the bulk of it he gives away or bargains, trades with, and there are not, there are not trailers, trucks and trailers of wood coming in and out of there daily or even weekly. The wood that shows up on that site is typically given to him or a byproduct of maybe site clearing or something where he's only picking up one or two trees at the time. He's in a unique situation right now because he had somebody that did some land clearing that had a bunch of logs that needed to go somewhere, and Frank just was, as being a generous neighbor, said, yes, you can put them there, we'll saw some of them up if you want to. But it is not, that was not a money, that was him being a good neighbor to someone else. The typically, well, without a doubt, logs do not come into that property on a semi-truck, and lumber does not leave that property on a semi-truck. The goods and services, or the timber that comes in there, comes in on the trailer pulled by a pickup truck. It's not, it's not, I can't stress enough the minuscule level of production as compared to what you would expect to see out of a sawmill. So I have to go, you know, and because of its limited production, when we first received this letter and I first started researching it, from, from day one, the planning has tried to shove us into this section, commercial ag-related. Section 45-57, no, 45-59, commercial ag-related. And it talks, that's the only place, now if you get into Land Development Code, the only use category, in all of the use categories, the only use category where you're going to see the word sawmill is in commercial ag-related. So they recognize that it's agricultural thing, but they, but that use category is not allowed. If you look through the uses by zoning district, the next section that they have to put in, the only place that that category is allowed is in agricultural zoning. So the zoning is trying to paint this with a wide-stroke brush. They're trying to put anything that you can label sawmill into a classification that bears industrial-level concerns, and that's not what this, that's absolutely not what this is. We have contended from day one that it should not be a commercial ag-related use category. It should fall under 45-57, ag-general. And under that, ag-general says, agriculture general states, agricultural uses are those related to the production, keeping, or maintenance, whether for sale or personal use of plants or animals for food, forage, fiber, or ornamental purposes. Now, lumber is fiber, and the, a lot of, the bulk of the production of what Mr. Buckles does coming out of there is decorative corral board fence and tongue-and groove wall, wall coverings or siding, however you want to label it, both of which are decorative, both of which meet the word-for-word definition of ag-general. Now, had zoning taken an understanding of our point of view, realized in 45-57 that we meet the word-for-word definition of what they're trying to put in ag-general, then they would have accepted the use and a, and a special use permit would not have been allowed, or would not have been required, rather. But we couldn't come to an agreement. Zoning, zoning held to their guns that they're going to try to shove it in this hole in commercial ag-related, when the whole time we were saying it's ag-general, it doesn't need a special use permit. So to facilitate compliance, here we are 750 dollars later, standing in front of you guys, trying to determine where this thing's going to go. So let's say, let's, let me back up one second and say that in that, in that, that pigeonhole of sawmill, there's a caveat in there that says, when the wood comes from the, from it, from the site where the saw is located, meaning it only can be cut off the four and a half acres where the saw, that's not the case with any other sawmill in town. The two industrial-level sawmills that we have that are zoned ag, that both operate with multiple semi-trucks of wood coming in and out, don't have one stitch of wood cut on the property or the adjacent property. And I, and when I brought forth the argument, hey, look, Mr. Buckles owns more property than just where the saw is. He owns 10 acres down the road that's timbered. Can we bring saw, can we bring logs from there to his mill? His, for his use, his mill, his, his property, although it was not adjacent, they said, no, you cannot do that. It has to come from the site. They were taking a literal word-for-word of what the thing said. So if we're going to go by word-for-word, our contention has been you can go to ag-general and fit word-for-word definition and not have to have a special use permit. But again, here we are 750 dollars later. So the direction would be, what if I were to say, I wanted to set up a sawmill, knowing that I was not going to bring a small-scale sawmill, not a, not a industrial-level, something from, basically for my own personal use, bartering trade, some of the material? If I were going to set that up, if I were going to set that up and I came into the building department, or the zoning, rather, and I specifically said, I'm not cutting the wood on my property, any other variation from that requires that you make an interpretation of how it's going to be used. So it doesn't fit the slot of commercial ag-related because the trees aren't coming from there. So how are we going to apply it? Well, if you're not going to accept the fact that we believe it's ag-general, then we have to find another path to compliance. Well, the path to compliance, I believe, if we, if we choose that, if we say, yes, we're willing to accept that it's going to take a special use permit in some form or fashion, then the path to compliance becomes going to ordinance 2002-06, which is the adoption of the Land Development Code. And in section two of that, on the first page of that, it says, where a term is not defined within the context of these articles, the Land Development Code, the definitions provided in the zoning ordinance 88-1 or elsewhere in existing ordinance shall apply. So the fact that it doesn't fit into the, the context of sawmill where trees are grown from the other land, that, and it's not specifically defined anywhere else in the Land Development Code, means we need to refer to ordinance 88-1, which is the original, you guys know this, this is the original Land Development Code that was adopted in 1988. And in that, in the original 88-1, it make, it says that in agricultural zoning, a sawmill without the caveat of the trees coming from, it just says sawmill, is accepted in agricultural product, or agricultural zoning, provided it has a special use permit. So if we're going to come to common ground, you're not, they're, zoning's not going to accept my, my understanding as it's general ag, and I'm not going to take theirs that it's a sawmill coming with, where we're cutting only the trees from the property, then the middle ground, the path to compliance, is going through 88-1, in which case, there's no caveat for trees from elsewhere. Now, with that being said, it's obvious that planning does not understand the limited scope of what goes on out there, how, how little it's used. It may be used once a week, it might not be used in a week. The logs aren't coming in and out, there's not delivery. Mr. Buckles does not have employees. When he works out, he works by himself. If you see anybody else out there working, it's friends of his helping it, that he's probably providing wood to them. Like, that's, that's how he operates. The wood that he uses out there, I have a prime example, Pinal Baptist Church had four trees taken down where they were installing a new modular building. The arborist came in and said, it's going to be such and such many dollars for us to take the trees down, and it's going to... and it's gonna be a dramatic amount more if we have to move the trees, if we have to haul the big wood off from there." They called Mr. Buckles and said, "We've got four trees down here, would you, what would you charge us to move?" He said, "I won't charge you anything. I'll show up there and pick them up." He brought his equipment onto the site to pick up four, four pine trees, load them on a trailer, and hauled them off, for free, free of charge. And that's not uncommon. That's very common for what he does. He's basically taking what is refuse off of other jobs, turning them into something that we can use. So it's obvious that staff doesn't understand the minimum production of what's going there. So much so, we understand the buffering issue. We understand that you wanna keep it hidden from there, but they keep making a point about noise, well, and to the point where they've, they've brought up buffering, and they've brought up enclosing the sawmill in a building. Now, that shows a lack of understanding of how the sawmill works. The bandsaw, you pick a log up with a fork, with a tractor with a set of forks on it, and you place the log on the bandsaw, it saws it into whatever you're gonna saw it, and you offload it with a, with a tractor with forks on it. That would require a ten thousand square foot building, and we're gonna all die carbon monoxide in the building because the tractor's not made to be inside the building. So that, that right there shows me that they do not understand the production of what's going on there. And the enclosure thing wasn't required on either of the other two sawmills who are industrial-level sawmills. So the biggest thing that I can stress is, I don't want us to jam every, just because we can put the name "sawmill" on it does not mean we need to paint everything with one brush. So, you know, just to summarize this all up, we are, we are here to facilitate, we are here to facilitate compliance. We disagree with the, with, with how they've tried to put it in a hole. We, we believe it should be Ag General and not require the special use permit, but if we're gonna go through eighty-eight point one, we don't mind acknowledging we need a special use permit. However, we would prefer that you guys not take the recommendations of enclosure and logs coming from somewhere else, because eighty-eight dash one specifically leaves us the ability to have a mill in agricultural zoning, without that restriction of, of log origin, and without the restriction, the restriction of the enclosure. As far as I know, Mr. Buckles, with the exception of maybe one or two neighbors, has a good working relationship with everybody there. Again, the mill's run by a lawnmower engine. It's nothing more dramatic than that. It's, it really is, it really is a small-scope project what he's got going out there. And again, it's been in, it's been in, it's been there for a long time. It's, the fact that somebody's making an issue about it now just shows how off the radar it is, to the point where, when codes enforcement, when I talked to Tom from codes enforcement, who actually wrote the original thing up, he said, "I had no idea it was out." He said, "Until I got to the back of the property, I didn't know anything was even there." So that's how, that's how hidden from public view it is. So I think Mr. Buckles is willing to, willing to do whatever he needs to do to make compliance, but I think, I think we are trying to institute a lot of things that, that don't necessarily be, need to be put on him. So with that, I'll take any questions that you guys have, or...
Well, I am not a sawmill person, but I, you made a statement, and I have a question for you. You said that you did corral boards and tongue-and- groove, so how do you do tongue-and- groove with just a bandsaw?
He does tongue-and- groove with the bandsaw, and then he has a, he has a planer in the, in the, one of those enclosed containers out there.
Okay, so...
So it's, it's not one process on the bandsaw.
I understand. No, I know that. You can't, you can't do...
So there's a, I mean, I'm not saying the band, the bandsaw's the only piece of equipment on site, but I'm saying that the product, so one of the caveats in the, in the definition of sawmill was something that didn't produce finished wood. So, and they, they excluded out, like furniture places and stuff that actually take raw wood and turn it into something. And I didn't wanna like bring that argument forward to, but I, I believe that that is absolutely a piece of this puzzle. He's taken, he's not just producing lumber, as you would expect a sawmill to. He's producing a finished product, and the bandsaw that he uses is just one piece in that puzzle. It's not, it's not, it's not a commercial business that's built around the saw, as a sawmill. It's a, it's a family-owned, small-time farm-type operation where he produces a finished product that is not lumber. It's, it's decorative board. So, and I, and again, I think that fits in Ag General all the way. I think that fits one hundred percent into the definition of, of the use category of Ag General. Now, we've had a big, we've had several disagreements on that, but I, from our view, that is exactly what, what's happening here, so...
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Morris? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Okay, I'm sorry. Are you speaking in favor? Are you speaking in opposition? Okay. If you're speaking in opposition, you may come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Santa McDaniel. I live at twelve eighty-one South Sable Road, nineteen, right next door to the Jason Land.
Okay.
All right. Just from what I heard from this lady and what the gentleman just said...
Could you speak up a little bit more?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me this thing, or...
Yes, sir.
From what I just heard from that lady and gentleman just right now, everything, there's also a few other things to consider besides just what he said as far as a bandsaw. The bandsaw, I've never been up close to it and noted, this is a circular round blade or an actual bandsaw and everything, but it's as large as that whole piece of desk y'all sitting in front of, and probably a little bit higher and stuff like that. And a truck would not just pull that. It'd need to be a fifth wheel or a gooseneck duly or anything to move the stuff. So it's not just something you just get at Lowe's or buy off-line and everything. As a bandsaw, you would have in your backyard cutting up a little bit of lumber. And the trees out there that have been stored closer to my house, which is farther up from the sawmill itself, is at least half the size of that diameter as far as around, and half to three-quarters the length and everything. So that's not just something you just, you know, call, pull up with a truck or a small trailer and everything. When I say a trailer and everything, I was out there when it was, most of that wood was delivered and stuff and brought onto the property and everything, and it was dumped by this huge black trailer on the back of a truck that had, you know, tilt bed, dumped lint. So much lumber was dumped out there, just to that one little fall and everything, that literally shook the ground, shaking the windows in my house. My wife screamed in the middle of the morning and everything, going, "What's happening? What's happening?" And I'm like, "The next-door neighbors dropping off some lumber, just something that happens and everything." And I understand this man, he uses this to make some money sometimes. Sometimes he uses it to give to charity, to help other people out and everything. That's great. But the point is, us neighbors, they live right there and everything. We have to take the blunt of that, not just the sawmill on the back, which we can hear very loudly in a twenty-five horse or not. It's a screaming blade that makes a lot of noise cutting that wood and everything. So, and all the other stuff as far as the equipment, which is an articulating loader and everything, and another piece of tractor, I believe a forklift and everything, that comes out there and moves the lumber and moves the blocks back and forth and everything from right there beside my house all the way to the back, and then back again and everything. So when he does do it, whether it be on every weekend or every other weekend and everything, it's usually first thing in the morning, crack of dawn, a little bit later and everything. So that wakes me up in the morning and everything, which I have to go to work in Jacksonville, and I've gotta leave sometimes, you know, that time, or sometimes I gotta leave at three o'clock in the afternoon so I didn't get any sleep, and I gotta listen to that most of the day. The point is, is I'm trying to make is, it's not just located in the back and everything. It's that whole piece of land up there all the way to the houses. I believe you just said there's a house to the right and left. I want it on the one to the left. And when the trees are dropped off there, it makes a thunderous sound from heavy equipment and stuff being dropped off in that piece of land, and then pushed all the way up to right there next to my piece of property, that I've gotta look at these lumber, you know, which is not, you know, incredibly bad or anything, but the point is, I gotta look at, you know, giant stacks of lumber beside my house, you know, for six months till they dry out, till he cuts them and gets rid of them and everything. And the lumber that he brings on and everything is donated from other people and stuff like that, which is basically, you know, money in his pocket because he didn't have to pay for it. So it's free wood that he gets and has to use to cut and then sell, if he wants to sell it or give it away, whatever it pays to be. But the point I'm trying to make is everything, it's not just right there at the very back, which is not enclosed and everything, which I don't know if that's gotta be fully enclosed, which I understand that, just like the man said and everything, it's illogical to have a small building. He's gotta have room enough to put the wood and everything like that, or he'd have to have a ten thousand square foot building and everything, which that's gonna take a lot of, you know, money, time, and everything. But the fence lined out that separates our property and everything is, I haven't even cut the trees because of this, because I'd love to cut it and see my fence again and everything, but when the trucks and trucks and woods out there are being dumped off and everything like that, it blocks a little bit of sound, but not enough. And between the sawmill and this right here, and him working every weekend, which he has not worked every weekend because I think this right here came up, it's been a real headache for the rest of us to live around and everything because it was, at one time, literally every weekend. And every weekend's the only time I have off, so I gotta listen to a sawmill run every weekend. So I don't know, how about y'all and everything, but I'm sure y'all would like a little quiet time, y'all a little homestead, too. So I don't, do not think that this special permit should be allowed. And if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I think if he's restricted from bringing anything in on his property anymore, that, you know, anybody coming in and dumping logs would be resolved.
That's if.
That's, you know, we'll, we'll see, so...
I mean, if I got a sawmill, I'm gonna want to make some money being out there. I'm gonna, you know, bring wood in. And I, like I said, I live right next door. Doesn't have that many trees. I mean, maybe a week's worth of cutting, two weeks' worth of cutting, and he's out. But so that wood, like the man, like the gentleman said, almost ten acres down the road, I'd wanna bring that wood in and cut it. And if I had a sawmill that size and everything, and it is, it's a little bit of a monster and everything. It's been out there for a long time, and I understand it's, you know, an antique. So it ain't no little quiet little coiler running, you know, it makes a noise. So I'd wanna use it to its full efficiency.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I have a question of you.
Oh, yo, you have a question, Mr. McDaniel? Okay.
How long have you been there?
I've been there six and a half years.
Six and a half years, so you knew the, you knew the mill was there when you went there?
No, I didn't, actually.
You did not?
We bought the house and everything. We didn't see it until, I think, three days after we signed the papers because, like I said, the trees were up by the fence and everything like that. And as me and my wife were walking the property and everything, looking at, oh, because we was looking at the house, of course, more important than anything. We looked at the property. She wanted to put some horses out there. She said, "What is that?" And I looked at her and I said, "I think that's a sawmill." And I said, "It's a big one, too." And she said, "Well, what do you mean it's a sawmill?" I said, "Well, it's one of the ones you can pull on your property and cut lumber with and everything." She said, "What do you mean by lumber?" I said, "You know lumber, you know, two-by-fours, four-by-eights, six-by-sixes, you know, big lumber."
So you didn't do due diligence around where you were buying it?
Like I said, we were living in Jacksonville at the time and everything, and I did not inspect the full property land and everything like that, and it was pushed over to the back. And that's where he was first starting to cut. We didn't even know it ran, because like I said, it looks so old, until like the first two weeks we were there, and then Saturday morning we woke up to a sawmill running next to us.
Okay. The sawmill, the statement was, "Sawmill's been there for forty years?" Twenty, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Morris, you want to have a rebuttal on that?
I have a question for him, too, when he gets...
Okay. Oh, you had another question?
I have a question for him when he gets done.
At the, at the time that he purchased the property there to the north, that sawmill was on the front half of the property, was operating up there probably a hundred and fifty yards closer to his house than it were currently positioned. When he purchased that property shortly thereafter, Mr. Buckles moved the mill to the back of the property. And again, what he's, what he's calling there, a load, a delivery of logs, I, I mentioned in my, my statement that Mr. Buckles did take a large load of logs being helpful to somebody. So if there's a, if you guys wanna restrict the number of logs coming in, or the amount of logs that can be on it, I mean, I, that may be an option there, too, but, but it was an isolated incident, what the neighbors referring to versus what is consistent with normal use there. So like I said, that, 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 that bandsaw was dramatic, a dramatic amount closer to his home prior to him purchasing, and when he purchased it, and consequently, you know, from, from, from that house being purchased from, from the Mullises, I believe he got it from David and Dean Mullis, after he purchased that, being a good neighbor, Frank moved the, moved the mill to the back so as to not disturb him. So it's not, he's, Mr. Buckles is not over there without consideration to the neighbors. He takes his, he takes the neighbors pretty seriously. So, you know, a lot of times, most, most time a simple phone call clears a lot of that stuff up. This is, I think this is where the codes case originated from, the call for, that got this whole ball rolling, so...
Okay, you just, you mentioned something about bringing logs in. Well, according to this, you can't bring logs in anymore.
And that's our whole point of contention. Number one, we shouldn't be here for a special use permit. Number two...
Well, we're here today.
No, no, I understand that. I, I understand that.
But, but this...
But we're here today, however, if, if this board recognized that that bandsaw, from the way we've described it and what actually happens there, is under the understanding it falls under Ag General, even though you guys issue that special use permit, it's not, it would, if you were to say it belongs to Ag General, that, that, that SUP's not needed. I mean, that, that's the solution. You know, that's the easiest solution for us, but we understand that that's not gonna happen, but...
Madam Chair, if I may address that, if you will...
Yes, sir. I was gonna ask you to chime in.
Just to address a few points, this is, this is a method for compliance for them. There is no other method of compliance. Going back to a previous code that's not enforced anymore is not an option here. The, the point about there is no path forward for a sawmill that brings logs on site, there is a path forward. It's in, in an industrial zone, it's considered a heavy industrial use in the Land Development Code. The point about the sawmill having been there for the last twenty years, we pulled aerial imagery going back to two thousand and five and two thousand and eight, and I don't see any buildings out there or any structures that would appear to...
The structures weren't there.
Hang on just a second. That would appear to show any kind of presence of a sawmill. The, so the, the point about the properties to the north and south not being residential, they certainly are residential. They have residences on there. So an agricultural district that has a single-family residence on there is considered a residential property. And I think that addresses most of the points that I, you know, we, we've tried to, to explain to the applicant that this is the only point forward, but the idea that there's some other path forward is just not possible under the current code.
May I ask that?
Sure.
Question? Question? With your saying that if it's a residential property, if a residential home is on an agricultural zone property, is considered residential?
Yes, sir.
Is it taxed in that way, too?
Yes, sir.
It is?
Yes, so the property appraiser looks at whether there's a single-family residence on there, and I don't know if, I don't know exactly how they tax it, but I do know that there's a residential classification...
I do know how they tax it. They tax out the portion, the portion that is residential, they tax it, an acre or whatever.
That's only if it's green-belted. That's not...
And then they, they cut it into pieces for whatever there is.
That's false. That is not, that's, if it's green-belted, then they will exempt the portion that's green-belted. But if it's not green-belted, then the property is taxed residentially.
Mr. Fisher, did you have a question?
I answered my question.
Oh, you answered your question, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. The gentleman in the back that has his hand up, did you, were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. You're gonna speak in opposition?
Perhaps.
Okay, will you come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Neil Benson. I live at one-two-seven Karen Court in Hermitage Shores. And I'm not sure entirely whether I'm going to speak in opposition or support today. Perhaps a little bit of both. Likely will display my ignorance because I'm not familiar with this type of proceedings. If you talk to me about medicine, I know quite a bit about that, but I don't know much about government proceedings. I can say that I've known Frank Buckles for over twenty-five years. I know that he came about this parcel of land as it was deeded to him by his grandmother. I know that he came about this parcel of land as it was deeded to him by his grandmother, Lillian, who I knew as well. We have been, I believe that Lillian told me that her purpose in deeding it to Frank was so that he could build his home on it. It's also my understanding that he moved in the, the sawmill, as it were, in order to mill his own wood, in order to build his own home on that property that was deeded to him by his grandmother. He actually retrieved a log from my front yard after an 80-foot oak tree fell on my house in 2008, and took it to his property to mill the 20-foot long trunk that was about three feet in diameter. I have a concern, because I can hear that saw when I'm sitting on my back patio. It's about 300, maybe 400 feet from my backyard. And my concern has been, ever since I received this invitation, is this going to turn into a commercial enterprise? And is that saw going to be running 24/7? Because most industrial sawmills run almost around the clock, seven days a week. What I've heard today does not sound like that is the plan. It sounds as though there is going to be intermittent use of a limited nature for short periods of time. And the sound is annoying, but it's for short periods of time, it's not 24/7. I think that speaks in favor of Frank's position. My question would be, if this special use permit is granted, would that potentially open a door to change from what it is now to perhaps move in a more commercial, industrial direction? And I don't know the answer to that, I would have to depend on you folks for the answer So as I already said, I don't know whether I'm speaking for or against. I am very much in favor of Frank Buckles. I have cared for three generations of his family, I've known him most of his adult life, I regard him as a good neighbor, and I would never want to do anything to hurt him. I'm not too keen on having a sawmill 24/7 in my backyard. So if that means I'm for, okay, if it means I'm against, okay. I'm sort of in the middle, ma'am.
Okay, let me just tell you that this board does have the, they can put a limited hours of operation, if that is, if they so choose, as a condition.
Yes, ma'am, and I guess my follow-up question to that would be, who enforces that?
That's a good question, we'll ask staff.
So any conditions of approval, Madam Chair, would be enforced by the Development Services So I would caution that with hours of operation, if the condition on hours of operation is outside of the normal operating hours of the code enforcement department, it will be difficult to enforce that, unless we receive a complaint that has some sort of proof of conducting the enterprise, or the operation outside of those hours.
Okay, what are considered the hours within operation? Eight to four, eight to five?
Right now, we have not imposed a condition or recommended a condition.
I understand that, but you said, okay.
So, oh, you mean for the department, I'm sorry, 8:30 to 5:00?
8:30 to 5:00, okay, so if anything is outside of that, then if anybody calls and complains, and if it's ceased when you are there, then there's nothing you can do about it, is that correct?
Right. Unless we have some sort of proof that would show that they were operating outside...
Five days a week?
Yes, sir.
Monday through Friday, or?
Yes, sir.
And also, I think the question, will this special use permit roll over to a commercial or industrial use?
Not as recommended by staff, so if the five conditions are imposed, it will remain a small operation. And on the, so the, there was a point brought up about noise, one of the reasons that staff had recommended that it be within an enclosed building is because the entire time that we have spoken to the applicant, we have been led to believe that this was a very small operation, not any large machinery that could not be enclosed within a building, but staff would still stand by that recommendation to help mitigate the noise, because otherwise there is no mitigation of the noise, unless they put up a six- or eight-foot concrete block wall all around the property.
Okay, Dr. Benson, does that answer your question? Sort of sided?
Yes, and thank you, thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, anybody else have any questions for Dr. Benson? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wishing to come forward and speak?
Madam Chair, I just would like to share, I don't know, we did receive two emails, I believe all of you have them, from two citizens?
Yes.
One was pro, one was con, you have them, I believe, either in your packet or on, at your stations right now.
Are you going to put those as part of the record?
They will, they are part of the record and will continue to be part of the record.
All right. And anything else? Okay, at this time, the meeting will be closed to the public and open it up for a board motion and discussion.
I have some questions.
Okay, we have some questions before we decide to make a motion.
If we were to approve this, can we put some sort of condition in there to limit the size of this, so it can never go commercial?
So currently, the conditions as proposed, and even the use listed under the special uses under the Agriculture Zoning District, would never permit it to go commercially, or grow to a size that's commercial. If you wanted to, let's see here, if you wanted to impose a condition that states that no additional structures be added to what is already there, then that could limit any additional structures from being brought on the site associated with the sawmill. But as it's written now, and as staff has recommended, this will not be allowed to grow into a commercial enterprise.
My thoughts were that if we limit him to sawing timber harvested off of his property, there's not that much property out there, that sawmill's going to go down, you know, he could probably get rid of all the wood out there in a week. But then when I was there, I mean, he's got some big logs out there. We don't need logs that big out there, either.
Right, so this, the way the code is written and the way our condition is written, the applicant would not be, or the owner would not be able to bring any additional logs on the site. So the only option for continuing the operation would be to replant the site and use anything that's grown on-site. And that's the way the Land Development Code is written, we just reiterated it in the conditions.
I'd like to ask Mr. Perry your question, our attorney. If and ever he ever decided to go commercial or industrial, that would be, would have to be rezoned to be able to do that, am I correct, or?
Ma'am, that's another question for our staff, I think that they can address that better than I can.
Okay.
So, I mean...
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ever decided, would he have to rezone that piece of property to go commercial or industrial?
Yes, Madam Chair, the owner would have to rezone to industrial-heavy, which would not be compatible with the site, the staff would definitely recommend a denial.
I mean, you know, that's always an avenue, though.
Right, the applicant, or the owner could try.
Right, okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I take issue with the fact that we're trying to force a man to build a 10,000-square-foot building around the property and around the equipment that's been there for 20 years. We're trying to tell a man how to use his property, I mean, I know that's what zoning's all about and things like that, but these things are there and have been there 20 years, whether you saw them on-site, you know, on an aerial visual or not, most of the equipment's been there.
The equipment, not the building, is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying the equipment's been there, that there's no building, I mean, you know, there now.
Staff could find no proof of that.
Okay, and I understand that, I'm saying, you saw no aerial view or anything like that.
Right, but the applicant couldn't produce any proof of it.
But in saying "but," are you not saying in what you're asking here for him to build a building now?
That would be correct, but see, the reason that staff had proposed that is because the applicant has contended this entire time that this is a very small operation for personal products, so, or for family products, never that there would be, you know, a large operation there, it never, it was never portrayed to us like that.
Well, when you say "family products..."
Meaning for his own family, sorry.
Well, again, when you say "own family," are you talking about his personal family, right, his kids, his wife, and things like that?
Meaning not-for-profit.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Let me finish my question.
Sorry.
Do you realize how big Mr. Buckles' family is?
I fully understand, sir, but the issue here is not whether he can produce the products on-site, the issue here is that the applicant posed to staff something that was not represented the same way in this meeting.
And I'm going back to the 10,000-square-foot building, I mean, how do we make a man build a 10,000-square-foot building on his property?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm not sure where the 10,000-square-foot building came from, that's from the applicant, I don't know where, how that became a solidified requirement, but he would have to enclose it, that's correct, but not a 10,000...
A whole sawmill.
Yes, sir.
Not just a bandsaw.
So the operation of the sawmill would have to be enclosed, or if this board proposes another condition that would mitigate the noise better, but that was staff's only way of mitigating the noise in an economically feasible way for the applicant, as opposed to building a large wall that would mitigate the noise.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fisher?
I can't see anything, if it's only four acres, how, I mean, it lasts a week, and then he's done anyway. So I mean, unless they could change that, him bringing in wood from outside, I think he's just kind of S.O.L., excuse my language, but...
And that's what I'm getting at, you're shoving it right down his throat.
Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any way of letting him bring in a small amount of...
No, sir, the way the code is written right now, without a code change, we could not allow it, and I...
Mr. Morris, you're not going to be ready.
So there's, there's...
Excuse me, we're discussing, we'll...
Hold on a second.
No, no, excuse me, we are in a discussion.
So the way that the...
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the way that the code is written right now, we could not permit it, and we would never recommend approval of that either, just because of the...
My question also would be, who's going to regulate it? Who's going to say, "Oh, you can only bring in two logs a day?"
Right.
Or "You can bring in two logs this week," who's going to be out there to say, "Oh, you brought in four," so, you know, it's regulation also, so, you know, sometimes good intentions, and then we decide, "Oh, well, this is just one time, we'll do this." So unless there's no, there's somebody out there on a day-to-day basis to enforce it, there's no way to regulate or enforce it.
I know, but if it passes or doesn't pass, he's just...
Right.
Closing up shop, pretty much.
Well, you know.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just weigh in briefly, just to remind the board members, I think that, keep your, let everybody keep it in mind that what our staff is doing is interpreting the code. They're not adding to it or taking from it, they're trying to tell you what the status of the law is in Putnam County. I don't think they're trying to force anything down anybody's throat or make anybody do anything that they do not think is supported by the Land Development Code. I would also remind our board members that when you decide this issue, that you must decide it on the basis of substantial and competent evidence. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
When I'm directing this at staff, it's just staff, it's not personal.
Oh.
I just want him to understand that, I'm just, I'm looking at him because he happens to be...
Sitting over there?
He happens to be in that chair, okay? So this is nothing personal, I'm just, you know, I'm just stating my view.
Well, we're going to deliver.
Would you like to say something else before we vote?
Do what?
I said, would you like to say something else?
Are we going to give, since I've already closed the meeting to the public, is it, can I, as procedure, it's okay to have Mr. Morris come back up here? Or do we stick to Parliament Roberts Rules of Order?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure what Roberts Rules of Order actually says in this, but I know this, that you are the chair of the commission, and if one of our members has questions, or there's other questions for the board, you certainly have the power to reopen discussion.
Okay, all right, Mr. Morris, I will allow you to come forward and say what you have to say that's sort of not already been said.
Okay, thank you.
Would you just please...
I mean, okay, so...
Please, please identify yourself again.
Okay, Justin Morris, 180 Stokes Landing Road. The, Gabriel made a comment a few minutes ago about you cannot use an old zoning regulation, which is absolutely incorrect. Now, we're doing two things here, we're both reading the same codes, we both have a level of professionalism and a level of experience in these codes, and we are interpreting. He is interpreting the way he wants to interpret it, however he sees fit, and I understand that, but I have just as much experience, understanding codes and ordinance as they were written. Now, you can give a section of code, very often, to multiple people and come up with completely different interpretations. Now, Gabriel said that you cannot revert to the old code, when in fact, the first page of the adoption of the current Land Development Code says, "When you have an issue that's not resolved, you can refer to 88.1." So if you're talking about not using 88.1 because it's an old code, then that's absolutely incorrect, because you can, from the front page of the ordinance, refer to 88.1 to solve problems, which is exactly the problem we're having here. The problem we're having here is the new Land Development Code calls out a sawmill where the trees come from, its own property, as one piece, or anything beyond that has to be an interpretation. He's going to say it's heavy industrial, it could be considered light industrial through a reading, too, I could interpret a couple of different ways, it could be determined to be Ag. General, it could go in two or three use categories, depending on who is interpreting the code. I understand, it's his recommendation to y'all, but if you guys are only going to take his interpretation of the code without taking into the ability of a path to compliance through the code that I just cited, if you guys are not going to pay attention to that, and you're only going to take his word, then there was no sense for us coming here, because the recommendations from staff are going to be the things that are imposed. We are asking you guys for a unbiased opinion, and take it upon yourselves to interpret this code, not just regurgitate what's coming from planning, because we understand their position, we've understood their position from day one. We have never, in the, we have never, in the course of this action...
You have already sort of stated that. You have already sort of stated that, so is there something else that's going to be different?
Yes, ma'am. We have never, he accused us of misleading or lying about enclosing. He has correlated us saying that it's a small operation into somehow we were implying that we were going to enclose the building. We have never, in the course of this whole operation, mentioned or alluded to that, not one time. That is pure falsehood, and it feels personal from us. From that side of the, from that side of the desk, we understand, you guys got a lot of stuff to do and you should remain impartial and it shouldn't be emotional. But when you guys send out a letter where it's written from zoning and it has highlighted in red and it has a bunch of stuff, a bunch of code references and stuff in there that make people feel they're guilty, it takes an emotional, it is emotionally taxing, especially to the property owner, on a fight that very often the public feels is a losing battle. And if you guys won't take it on yourself to interpret the sections of code that I'm citing, and I don't care if we have, if you guys table this till the next discussion, I would prefer that you guys read the sections of codes that I just cited with an unbiased view of it. Right now, y'all are taking the opinion of that as fact, and what I'm saying is up here is skeptical. What I'm telling you is, I have read the same code books and the same ordinance that he has, and I have come up to a decision that what Mr. Buckles is doing can very easily be interpreted into a different use category without the restrictions that are trying to be imposed here. So, saying that we're trying to mislead and all that is not, is not correct. And that's, it's in y'all's hands, but we would appreciate an unbiased opinion.
May I make a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
This is totally a volunteer board.
No, I understand that.
They are not paid, we, you know, we have no input as to their decisions or anything. So, we are totally volunteer, we are all citizens of Putnam County.
I understood that. I sat on the Construction Trades Board and did the same thing that you guys are doing. But what I do know is that when the agenda comes before you and you guys see the cases that are here, your first call is not to me or the homeowner to find out what the problem is. Your call is to staff to find out the history.
We are not going to call you.
No, I know, and that's my point, but you can talk to staff, so for the-
So, we haven't, well, I haven't.
Well, but you have the option to. So, to prevent there from being any misplaced communication, you guys shouldn't be talking to staff before this problem, too. This should be, in effect, a judgment on the facts based on what you guys hear today, not researching their position, assuming that it's right, and then just listen to me blabber on and then siding with what their findings were, because that's not, I just laid out a path to compliance, word for word, right out of the Land Development Code and the ordinances.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I don't want to be combative up here and I don't want, and I, it's just, it's an emotional topic, and we have been working, I have lost sleep, and it's not even my property, over how this is handled, because we started off with Gabriel's predecessor here, and I thought we were to a point where he was going to back a special use permit with not a bunch of extracurricular stuff in it. He was under, Trulliano, or whatever his name was, was under the understanding, he knew the limited function of this, and then he left. And so, when Gabriel took it over, enclosure and the buffer came in after our meeting without us ever being aware. We were not aware that those two requirements were coming until we received the letter of what staff's recommendation was going to be. And we've had multiple meetings with zoning before this happened and came to an agreement trying to work this out. And then we had multiple, we had multiple things get thrown in on us. So, to flat-out act like we're being untruthful about it is not correct. We have been forthcoming and tried to get compliance. Our problem is, we just differ about how the interpretation of the code goes. So, like I said, we'd appreciate you guys to look at it through an untainted lens.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for letting me come back and speak.
Madam Chairman, is, can I address staff?
Go ahead.
Gabriel, when you start talking about enclosing a building or an building enclosurement, I mean, you're talking about roof structures and all, right? Is that what you're saying? Or a cement wall around the property?
I mean, I think that would fit in with the intent of that condition, a wall around the immediate-
A wall. That's where I was going.
A privacy fence would not, but-
She's going to get on to you. That's where I was going, with a, you know, like a six-foot privacy fence around it. Maybe not around it, but maybe two towards this gentleman's home or towards the other gentleman. There's got to be a medium that we can reach.
Agreed.
That doesn't cost Mr. Buckles a lot of money.
So, something that would mitigate noise, much like a building's wall would, but a six-foot privacy fence would not mitigate noise very much at all.
How about, I mean, a six-foot privacy fence and some kind of buffering vegetation?
Well, so, that's required, that would be required in the type A buffer, one or the other. But then, perhaps to fulfill the intent of that condition, number four, if this board wishes to alter that, to simply state a sound mitigating barrier, such as a concrete wall or a, some sort of thing is, what I don't want to do is recommend that something unsafe be built out there.
And I'm not recommending that at all, but, you know, me being a poor old country boy, I know that when you get into, you're starting to do things like this, that the more money somebody puts on you requiring you to do things that you've been doing for a number of years already under another code, and now you've got this code that's telling you you're wrong, again, how just are we to be doing that to this person?
So, and I would agree with you on that point. However, this code has been in place since 2003, and staff, again, could not find any evidence of there being a sawmill operation prior to 2003. So, if- Give me just a moment, I'll try to think of some wording here. I would recommend simply, if you're, if the board is not content with the wording of number four, then simply stating that a soundproofing barrier be installed, and then suggest certain barriers enclosing the area.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we can suggest some kind of barrier.
Right, so, number four could be altered to state that and then provide some suggestions that would be inclusive of what the board would want.
Okay, because I'm not, I'm not trying to, I want you to understand, I'm not trying to say anything when I asked you how long you had been here. I'm not trying to say, you know, you've only been here six years, I just, you know, I'm trying to find a medium, a happy medium between what's going on here. And there has to be that. I mean, you know, we, I mean, as neighbors, we have to do that with each other.
But I would also like to make mention that I think, had we actually seen the operation itself, because when I went down there, the gate was closed. No way was I going to open that gate and walk down or drive down to see the building. So, it was not accessible to us or to me in any way today. So, I don't know if anybody else got to drive down to see the building or you went to the gate and you stopped. So, I could see something that looked like green metal on farther down, but you could not see the actual operation. So, I think in instances where there is some contention that the owner or whoever the applicant is should make the site visits for us a little more approachable that we can actually see what's going on. So, we're all, you know, the building could have been halfway up or, you know, sides or whatever, I don't know. So, and then there's also the issue with the noise.
Well, and so, there, let me just add, Madam Chair, if I may, that these buildings, right now, one of the reasons this has to go through the development review process is because some of these buildings are not permitted right now. Once they're permitted, they may have to be moved slightly to meet setbacks. So, putting a more general condition is what I recommend, rather than putting in something that's very specific to the site, because they may still have to be moved.
It still has to go through the development-
Yes, ma'am.
Review Committee.
Correct.
Okay.
After, if this is approved.
If this is approved, correct.
Can I?
Mr.?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, can I make a motion that we table this until we have what's the word? Yeah, there you go, more clarity in the situation?
We can make a motion. I don't know if the applicant is willing to- You would be in favor of tabling this and- Okay, all right, so-
I make a motion that we table this until we have more clarity to the situation?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a statement you guys have got to read before-
Oh, Madam Chair, if I may, if you would define the clarity that you're seeking-
I have no clue, because this is just as clear as mud. I'm not being funny.
If you have, if you have questions, you're welcome to ask staff, but if you, if you move to table to seek more clarity, staff would have to have some sort of direction as to what clarity is being requested, or else we'll be in the same situation at the next meeting.
May I say something?
Go ahead.
What I would like to see is somehow or other, let Mr. Buckles keep his operation, but limit his hours to a much shorter time, and, you know, daylight hours. We still want to please the gentleman over here, and the doctor says it is noisy. You know, we want to please them, we want to please everybody, at least I do. And it's going to take a little bit of-
We're okay with limited hours.
Pardon?
We're okay with limited hours.
He's okay with limited hours?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Buckles, if you want to talk to us, you need to be sworn in. So, I'm, we're about as liberal as we've ever been on the discussion today on a case.
Amen.
If you want. We have usually strict, 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 and it goes bang, 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 and over it is. But if you want to talk, we will permit it, but you have to be sworn in.
Okay, for my, oh, you still have the floor, I'm sorry.
What I was trying to say is, in the past, we have been chastised for going outside the rules, approving things that maybe we shouldn't have approved. To prevent that, maybe we do need to talk to see what we can do to keep everybody happy. Well, let's face it, we're not going to make everybody happy, but make them kind of compatible.
Madam Chair, if I may, address that point. There, so there is no way within the code as it's written right now to allow them to continue their operation of bringing logs on the site. So, even if this were to be, this, this board could not approve that as the code is written right now.
Okay.
I know that the applicant continues to contend that there is a path forward through general agriculture because of the first part of the code that says that you would rely on a previous code if something is vague or ambiguous, but there is no vagueness there. For a commercial sawmill operation, it would go through industrial heavy. Now, if that could not be fit, or if a use could not be fit in a certain zoning district and there were, in fact, vagueness, then we would fall back on the old code. But because there's not any vagueness, we have to abide by this code.
Yes, sir.
With what he just said, I don't think waiting's going to matter, because there would be a limited operation anyway with only four acres of trees to work with.
No, I agree with you, Adam. He needs to bring trees in to stay in business.
This is not up for discussion as far as-
And that's not going to happen.
Bringing trees in. That is a point that's not, it's not, it's not up for discussion.
Correct.
Madam Chairman, staff keeps calling it a commercial sawmill. I have an issue with that, because the fact of, I mean, it's not operating all the time. From what was said, there was-
I didn't hear, I didn't hear them say "commercial."
He just said "commercial" just a minute ago.
Madam Chair, if I may, I was referring to the other path. The applicant alleges that because there's vagueness, that there's supposedly vagueness in the code for the commercial path, that somehow we would fall back on the old code for that commercial path. We're not alleging that this is a commercial, fully commercial.
Okay, all right, well, besides, I heard those words, so that's what I thought you were alleging, that it was a commercial.
Yes.
Sawmill, but I mean, I mean, everything I'm hearing, he's not using it all the time. He's not using it, you know, I mean, he's cranking it up on the weekends, which I understand the neighbor, he's got to work. I worked shift work, too. I worked at the paper mill 15 years. And anything that goes around outside of your house and going on keeps you from your regular work going on. But I'm understanding that it's, I mean, is this, is it being used on the weekends? I mean, is it just being used on a Saturday, not all the other times? You know, I understand what you're saying about, you know, that it just goes back to where it keeps, I keep thinking that it's just a family-operated sawmill and that it's, you know, used for that purpose with the wood and stuff, and again, bartering the wood, you know, giving the wood to other people, giving it away, things like that. Maybe sometimes using, you know, using it for commercial uses. I say "commercial uses" for, you know, getting it for other people for money. I'm just having a hard time with, you know, a man that's, his father and him had a sawmill, and now we're trying to take it away from him, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
I'm not sure we're trying to take it away, it's just maybe we're trying to limit what is, what is-
I understand.
To be done.
But if we- If we do, that's what I was just fixing to state, if we do that, then we are taking it away, and so-
Well, then, if, to me, if there's going to be logs brought in from outside, then you get into a commercial part of it, so.
Yes, ma'am. I withdraw, I withdraw my motion, Madam Chairman.
All right, Mr. Buckles, I gave you an opportunity to come talk to us and if you want to be sworn in. Okay?
It's on a trailer, why can't they move it?
Well, it is portable. Where are they going to move it to?
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Frank Buckles, 165 West Ranch Trail.
Palaka?
Palaka.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I'm born and raised.
All right.
Been here my whole life, won't leave it. So, this property was given to me, like Dr. Benson said, from my grandmother. She bought it from Wayne and Annemae Vincent to move up to Plaka if something happened. I've been on that property since I was in diapers. The wetland area they talked about was a behan pushed by Wayne Vincent with a dozer. I have a long history on that property. And this all falls to vent, and it's no, and just coincidence, but that sawing was a hobby my father and I did. It is not a commercial operation. I've spent way more money over there, and you can ask my wife, than I have ever brought in to do anything, even in barter for over there. It was my father and my relief. We worked industrial maintenance. He worked out at the paper mill for 38 years. I went behind him, got a degree from University of Florida, and I do industrial maintenance. We travel around. I've been gone for three weeks working at outage right now. This was my first day back in Palaka. Thank goodness I was able to get done and get back to hear this. For me, I never knew that I was doing anything wrong by running a portable bandsaw. This bandsaw may be long, but it's 20-foot long. It has a single axle underneath it, and it does have a two-inch ball receiver tongue that you hook up to a pickup truck, anchor it down, and pull it to a job site and saw wood. I've had this sawmill. My father purchased it years back. He sawed every board in his house. It's V-tongueed grooved cedar and cypress through the whole house, except for one room, my sister's. My mother drew a line. She wanted some drywall and some color somewhere. So, this is a family heritage. My grandfather was a forestry manager for St. Regis Paper Company. He sawed lumber. I've got chairs I made that were cypress logs that were so large that they had to be sawed with a chainsaw first to get them on the large sawmills that was dug out of the swamps. It's just a history. It's a family thing. And we used, I lived out at that property. My wife, I had a 1970-something peach or- My wife, I had a 1970-something peach or whatever, single wide, and about the third time I fell through the floor, she said, "I got to do something different." And I said, "Well, you find somewhere and we'll move." And lo and behold, two weeks later, she had papers when I come back to Palaka to sign, and she bought a house not far from that, on the other side of 19. So I still live in that area. To me, and I know there's laws, but I didn't know I was breaking anything. My buildings, they're pole barns and Conex trailers, and I kind of knew, I figured it'd be easier to ask for forgiveness and permission. And I knew that, and I apologize for that. I know that's kind of wrong, but that's kind of a family thing. So when this come up, I didn't know I was upsetting anybody. The sawmill does make noise, it's a lawnmower engine, and the blade makes a noise going through the thing. It is a bandsaw, but I am limited production. I do the maintenance at commercial sawmills for George Pacific, Wes Frazier. They saw more in one minute than I can saw in a whole day. One minute. That's the difference in production. The trees that are on site right now is because of the lack of time getting over there. And that large mount was a friend clearing land on Lundy Road. Man, I don't know what to do with these logs. Can I bring them over? Yeah, what do you want to do with them? He goes, "Well, I want some, how about we saw on halves?" So that is what the plan was, to saw on halves. He is Alaskan fisherman, he'll be back in October. And I called him last week and said, "I haven't sawed a thing." And basically, it's not because of the zoning stuff, that didn't scare me. I didn't know I was still bothering anybody. It was because I lost my father. That was our thing. I ran the mill, he ran the loader, sat in the air-condition, and the buildings was to, we're finally kind of moving ourselves up in the world. That mill was portable. When the gentleman who spoke earlier, it was up close to his house. The reason was because David was selling it, and I wanted everybody to know that whoever was buying that place, that there was a sawmill on this property. So I put it up front, and I tried to run it as often as I could while that house was for sale. I'd looked at buying that house, but I couldn't come to just terms with David on price. So I didn't take it. Hindsight, man, I wish I would have got that, and that property was split, that used to be one piece. So to me, to listen to this, it's a hobby, it's a release. I love cutting wood, I don't saw it for a commercial business, I don't sell lumber. Every once in a while, I'll sell some boards for somebody's fence or something to somebody who comes up, but most of the time, we trade. It's always been a barter, for the most part. There's a few every now and then, but there's no business there. There's not Frank Buckles Sawmill Incorporated, there's no money changing hands that is anything more than a couple dollars here and there. It's usually on trade. So it feels like that you're just shutting me down, and I apologize to my neighbor if I upset them with bringing logs in up front. I can keep that limited to the very back of the property. I can limit the way that I bring logs in. I use an Anderson dump trailer is what he's talking about, gooseneck dump trailer. I've had it for years, I bought it after Katrina or something like that storm, and I got a deal after they come back and stuff. So I've had that trailer for a long time, and we, it's easy to put logs in and bring them, and I was using the front as a lay-down yard, basically. But I can limit that, and that is actually going to be limited, because my wife and I are deciding we may do other things to the front. The front never was going to be built because if my sisters, my in-laws, or somebody needed a house or somewhere to live, we would always put, have that available to extend to family. That's why there's no buildings up front, and it's all, everything up there or something we can move away in case I need to build a house up there. That's the intent of that property. That property will not change hands for me, I will not sell it for any dime, and I'm raising my children to have that principle and philosophy of land. My father believed in land, he does tax certificates. He has 40-something-plus pieces of property on Putnam County. And the reason he, what pieces he'd look at was things with timber on it. His thought was, well, when we run out of wood and nobody gives us anything, and we want to cut something to make some more boards here or there, then he'd have properties that he could go cut a tree off of and bring. Some of the properties have nice trees, hardwoods or things like that, that are different than the long-leaf pines that I have growing on the middle section of my property. So, these are just the things that I wanted to let you know, sort of my story. Just in order, I don't know zoning, I can, like Dr. Benson said, he can talk medicine, well, I can talk bearings. I can teach you about machineries, we can laser align, I can do vibration analysis, and I can talk to you about sawing boards. I've done it for a long time, I've been around it since I was a kid. But to act that my sawmill is anything large and that I don't have time, I'm not out there much, it's not a major operation. When I'm not on a job, I would go over there and run the mills during the week some. I try to limit my operation. I am always somewhat trying to keep my neighbors in mind. And I've asked neighbors, a neighbor directly behind me, Officer Heath, I asked him, because he moved in lately, and he came around there in his patrol car, and I thought, "What did I do now?" And I asked him, "Does it bother you?" He goes, "No, it's a noise," he said, "but it's not anything that bothers me in my yard from what it is." I have no objections to fencing. I actually have a byproduct from sawing, it's slabs. When you square up a log, you get a flat one end rounded up the other. And I've always said, if I needed to, I could use those to build a fence, and that would be a substantial fence, it would have density to it. So it would be something that would knock noise down. Limiting where I'd, how and stuff, I have no problems with that, but it's still, I'm not a business. If I was a business, I'd say slap it to me, you could tell me how to run that thing, but I'm not a commercial sawmill. I'm just a guy with a hobby, and I might have a little bit more money invested in it than the other guys do with their hobby, but I don't have a big boat. That's where I sink my money into, is extra, is that property and my sawmill, and doing things on that property, making furniture, my bed, my children's beds, I've made all of those, and I'm working on my mother redoing her since my father passed away, just too much, and building her a new one. That's what that sawmill is about. It is not about commercial, it is not about growth. I never want to grow, I got enough work to do, I don't need to add that to my plate. And it would take a significant, from the mill I have, which is old, very old, and because of my line of work, I'm able to keep it running and sawing decently, to upgrade to a commercial status would be $100,000 investment. And it would be bringing it electrical, not gas-powered from a lawnmower. It would be three-phase, brought to the property to do that. So, as far as where I am, just giving you a history of my property and where I stand, if there's regulations, I would love to be able to keep my mill there, and I would love to be able to bring logs from properties that my family owned, that my dad spent money to get so that we can cut a, you know, cedar tree off of these, or a sweet gum off of that one. I don't mind restrictions, I don't want to make my neighbors mad, I am a Palaka boy. We don't want to make neighbors mad, because, you know, neighbors will get you, you know, in one way or another. So, I don't mind restrictions, I just would love to be able to keep doing what I do on my property that I have been doing for years, what my family has been doing for years. Maybe not there, and you might not have a picture, because that thing was on wheels, and I sawed in the sun since I was in high school. And we'd move it there for a little bit, saw some stuff, we'd move it to another property and saw stuff, or we'd move it to a friend's house and leave it. But the path we're taking right now does pretty much take what I've done there over the years, and I will, if, even if you give me a special use permit, I will be taking that sawmill away from there, because if I can't bring in a cedar tree, there's no cedar trees on that property. If I can't bring in a cypress tree, if I can't bring in something else here and there, and I understand it's hard to limit and stuff like that, I guess the way to control it is, I got neighbors, they still have the ability to call. So if I get out of any means, I guess they'll call and we'll be back here again. But to go the route we're going takes a long history of what my family does and just throws it away of what I've worked myself, my contribution to the family, bringing it up to something different away.
Okay, I have a question for you, because you said you would like to bring in wood from other places. Were you, were you not aware of the stipulation where it said, it was never discussed with you, that you could not bring anything on your property?
I have taught, before this, I had no clue that I'd be doing anything wrong, period. I didn't know, I know a lot of people with portable sawmills sitting in their yards where they cut wood, bring stuff to and from. So, didn't think that me and the, I know of at least 12 other guys in this county who do the same thing, were doing anything wrong. As we've been going through this process, the whole time through, the whole argument of, I still like Mr. Morris, that whole stipulation saying, "From this property, from this property," we were asking and saying that that's not what we want to do, that's not how we want to do it, but I get getting told, "This is the only path forward, this is the only path forward." So...
Madam Chair.
...this is my path forward.
Sorry.
So you will have to admit, though, there's a lot of lumber, or a lot of dead, domed down trees on your property.
And that's, I do admit, and part of that's my cleaning up and things like that. So, when Irma came through, man, everybody, because they knew I had one, I would come by there and be like, "What?", and it would just be people drop stuff there. So I had, and a lot of that hardwood to one side is still from Irma, and you can only burn so much, I can't afford to take it to the landfill and pay the fees there, so I've been working to clean that up. The logs that were brought in was, and I had no idea of what the amount was going to be when we were, you know, "Hey, we're clearing some land on Lundy Road, I've got a few pine logs, you want it?", and a few pine logs turned to a lot of pine logs. So, I do, and in the years I've done that, that is the most logs I've ever had. It's amazing how this world and everything comes to alignment. That's the most logs I've had on site at one time, hands down.
Yeah, but there's some also, and that's some eight-by-eights that are on that, that are...
What, up front? So that was a tree surgeon brought that wood back to me that he had somebody else saw, and he didn't stack it right, and he just dumped it, had his guys dump it there, I guess, thinking that I could stack it and dry it for him under one of my lumber barns.
That's quite a pile, too.
Which pile?
The eight-by-eights, the big...
Well, they're big, they're all different sizes, so, and he wanted to build a large timber thing, and they're just sitting there, and the reason I haven't touched them is because he has not contacted me, and I haven't been able to get ahold of him, because they're basically rotten, if you look at them, they were kind of rotten.
Well, okay, any questions for Mr. Buckles? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, if I may...
Yes, sir.
...address a point, I'd like to just share some of the discussions that we had with Mr. Buckles and Mr. Morris leading up to this. We had many discussions with them. At no point did staff ever intend on classifying this as a commercial business. I think, I thought that I had expressed that already, but the applicant apparently thinks that we continue to harp on that point, and we don't, and the staff's intention was never to shut this enterprise down. The conditions that are on there are to satisfy the criteria of the special use permit. We, staff cannot recommend approval, one, on something that is not in accordance with the code, two, on something that violates the special use permit criteria. So, if I may briefly just go through those conditions, because none of what the applicant just described will be prohibited by these conditions if the conditions are met. And as a sidebar, quickly, the applicant had previously stated that he has other properties, so if this is a portable sawmill, then if he runs out of trees on this property, then he could have applied for a special use permit for those other properties that could have been coupled with this special use permit as well. We could have reviewed them concurrently, the applicant decided not to submit those. So we advised the applicant as well, "Okay, so if it's a hobby of yours, and you intend on constructing furniture for your family, nothing prevents a homeowner from running a small saw at their property on a hobby basis, simply on a hobby basis, not for business purposes, to construct furniture." So that being said, condition number one is straight from the code. It advises that no wood materials may be brought onto the premises. We cannot do anything about this. I see that the desire of the applicant is to advocate for that, but not even this board could grant a variance to that stipulation. And regardless, there's no variance, excuse me, request. There was at one point an application in for a land development code change that was withdrawn when they decided to go forward with the special use permit. The special use, when we had the pre-application for the special use permit, the applicant was advised that staff would be conditioning. We didn't have all of the conditions there, because we didn't have the full request there, and we hadn't had a chance to review the full request. But the applicant was advised that there would be conditions to mitigate the impact. So we don't only consider the rights of the property owner, but we also consider the public welfare here, and there are property owners all around this area that have a right to the enjoyment of their property as well. Condition number two, the impregnating or, and/or saturation of wood products on the subject site, I'm not sure if they have an issue with that, that's simply to satisfy the criterion that says that no hazardous substances be located on the site. So, the use of copper arsenate preservatives are, it is very dangerous, and it has to be contained. So, I'm not sure if they have a contention with that, I don't think they do, but just as an explanation of that. Number three, the buffer. The buffer, that is the smallest buffer that we have, and so as I explained earlier, it can either have a row of six-foot evergreen trees or a fence. That deals more with the visual impact of the buildings rather than any kind of noise abatement. Four is to deal with the noise abatement. So, as I stated previously, if the board would like to recommend additional language be added to that, or altered language, that is within the competence of this board, and staff would pose no objection to it. Two, I guess better define it, as was previously discussed. Five, all existing and future buildings on the site shall be properly permitted, that's because the buildings are, some of them at least, are not properly permitted. So when we go to the special use criteria, one of the most important ones here is number 10, "The proposed special use will not adversely affect the general public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Putnam County." Number seven, adequate screening and buffering of the special use will be provided. So buffering doesn't only entail vegetative screening, but also noise abatement. And, "The special use will not substantially diminish or impair property values in the area or impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for permitted uses." So there are permitted residential uses in the surrounding property. So I could, I could go on and on, but I just, I wanted to fully explain staff's intention here, and it is not to shut down a business that has, according to... Okay, a hobby. A hobby. So, a hobby that's been there for an unknown number of years, because the applicant, again, could not produce any sort of documentation showing that it was even a non-conforming vested use. Excuse me, sir. So that is the position of staff, staff does not try to remove vested rights, and in fact, this is staff's attempt to continue the operation while balancing the welfare of the remaining public around them. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriel, can condition three and four more or less be combined to where there'd be a buffer and fence around the equipment as well as the property between the residents?
So, condition three, they could be, as long as, as the buffer... So the buffer has to be in the immediate area, because it's a code-required buffer. Or, excuse me, not in the immediate area, but along the property lines surrounding the use. But if you could supplement that buffer to where he has to put up a wall or some sort of noise abatement in that buffer, then yes, I think that you could meet the intent of both.
That would not require him from having to have a building?
Correct.
Okay, now, on condition one, can that be amended to require a limited amount of wood to be brought on the property, and then we have to agree on what a limited amount of wood is? You would have to depend on the residents to notify us if a huge tractor-trailer came in there and dropped wood, but cannot not be adjusted to where both sides can live with it?
No, sir, we can't, under the parameters of the current land development code. The code prohibits it outright.
Okay, now, under this board, we can just totally eliminate condition one?
You could, but it wouldn't prevent the fact that he could not bring the wood on... on site, that was just put there for clarity's sake, so he would still be in violation of the land development code if he were to bring any kind of wood from off-site.
Okay, since this is a portable unit, and the applicant is not a peer, if he has other family property, or other people that want wood planned, or, or worked on, how much trouble is it to pull your sawmill to where they are and do the work?
Let me, timeout, timeout, to get this on official, you need to come forward and speak.
Come on up.
This needs to be official and on the record. But I thought, Mr. West, I thought that he did not want to take his portable sawmill to his other pieces of property.
I, I don't intend to, because you move a sawmill, then you have to stack, then I have to move it back to the property to put it under barns to stack to dry.
So what we're looking at is there's no way we can work around condition one?
Eighty-eight dash one, if you reverted back to that, would, would allow that, I don't know.
Based on whose opinion?
Well, and that's, I mean, you look at, I mean, even the law looks at presence of what things have happened before and how things have been ruled, so, and there's other instances, so, I mean, it's, the whole purpose of what I've done out there with the lean to that is sitting under and, and the barns and stuff like that is to make life easier, it's moving up in the world, yes, it, it looks like I'm something, but it's really just taken from the kid who pulled a sawmill around, or had his dad pull it around and saw wood, to, all right, I'm tired of standing in sunshine all day and stuff, I'm getting older, and I'd like to be in the shade, and stuff like that, so, that's where that is on that, no, I would not like to have to try to pull the sawmill to each property and set it up, level it out, and, and do those items, not for my own personal use, now, if I was a business and I was charging a gentleman to do that, I get a charge for that time spent, so that would be great. For me, it's definitely easier to go out there, throw some trees on the trailer, and bring them back to the sawmill.
If you're going to make a point, you need to come have it, and then, then we're going to come to some kind of a conclusion.
Yes, ma'am, no, I, I told them...
It's, it's, um...
Every avenue leads to something else, but...
This dead horse...
If I can make one point, you, this board approved a special use permit for a sawmill in 2005 for the mulch plant, 2005...
That's, is that a commercial plant?
That is, that is, that is an industrial strength, commercial...
This is not the same.
I, I, I know, but let, let me just say that the restrictions, not the restrictions, the basis for the approval, if you go back and read the minutes of that, the basis for that approval came from staff recommendations, Mike Brown, who's been doing this much longer than anybody here, before he retired, in '05, staff recommendation for the SUP for the chipmill cited, it didn't cite the current land development, it was in '05 after land development code, but he did not cite the land development code, what he cited, what Mike Brown cited in the approval, or in the staff recommendations for the special use permit for the mulch plant, he cited eighty-eight dash one, that's the whole thing that led me to that, because a, a, a professional in the planning department on, in this building, under this more extreme sawmill conditions, approved and recommended for approval, without the stipulation of logs coming from somewhere else, or coming from the site, this staff, this board, with the same land development code that we are using today, cited eighty-eight point one, because it was on ag zone property, and it was, the, the trees were not coming from that site, that threw it into a completely different category, and that is why Mike Brown recommended approval and cited, if I can't say anything, they cited and used eighty-eight point one in 2005 when they approved a special use permit, that's, if, if it doesn't get any more precedent...
Mr. Morris, isn't that the, isn't that chipmill a commercial, industrial use?
So you're saying that you would rather...
No, I'm just asking.
No, yes, it is, it is a commercial use, but what, but what you're saying in this condition right here, is you're willing to impose less of a restriction on an industrial level mill than you are on a personal hobby mill, because we're trying to cram it in a hole in the land development code, when clearly staff said in '05 that you revert to eighty-eight point one, they reverted, I've got the copy of the ordinance there, so that, that is my only point, is...
To my point is, we're not going to debate what was approved in 2005, that's not a...
But it's precedent, that's, I mean...
That may be a precedent.
The attorney will tell you that his whole career is based on precedent, and how can you issue a SUP to an industrial level on zoned ag with more restriction than, with less restriction than you're going to do to, to a hobby mill, I mean, that's, that's the whole point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Now, I am, this time, sticking to my guns, I will not entertain any other outside comments other than the board, so at this time, this discussion is close to the public, and the board will now either make a motion and discussion, or come to some kind of resolution.
Madam Chairman, by being, from what I'm understanding, this board's hands are tied, and I hate to even do what I'm going to, what I'm going to move to do, just for the purpose of the fact that I don't believe in what I'm fixing to do, but I think it needs to go to a higher power than us, Mr. Buckles, I apologize for that, but, I mean, you know, like the chairman said, we are tied to certain things that we have to do, and, you know, I mean, that, we, as a board, we are, we are tied, not, not, you know, I mean, I, I don't know any other way to do this, but, in, in, in moving this, this would leave you to have to appeal to a higher power than us, and, but I move that we deny or approve the special case number SUP twenty-one dash zero zero eight, I don't know if I'm right in saying this right, but I, I mean, I just, I want to, as staff recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
And get the chairman to sign the final order.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve special use SUP twenty-one dash zero zero eight, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
I might ask a question.
Question.
If we approve this, we're saying they can do everything they want, but bring lumber into there.
Yes, that's what it says, number one says he cannot.
And if we say, and if we say no, they can't do anything.
Correct.
And it does away with the code case.
Does away with the code case, so, if we approve it, then he gets to continue. To, well, based on the recommendations, so, we have a motion and a second to approve SUP twenty-one dash zero zero eight, is there any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand, one, two, three, four, five, motion carries five zero, Mr. Buckles and Mr. Morris, you have a thirty-day appeal process, you can take this decision, and whatever you decide, to Circuit Court, okay? So, good luck.
Madam Chair, just for clarity's sake, if, if I may, that was with the five conditions, Mr. Killebrew?
Yes, he didn't change anything.
He said with conditions.
With conditions.
With, okay, thank you.
Okay, my goodness, all right, the next case is variance twenty-one dash zero zero four.
We can see it, they got it working, yeah.
This is a variance for Robert La Monaco, location is three, uh, 432 Cove Drive, Satsuma, the parcel size is point one zero acres, zoning is R2, future land use is rural residential, the request is for a reduction in side setbacks for two unpermitted sheds. The subject property lies within the Hermits Cove unrecorded platte dated December nineteen sixty-six, and administratively vested on October, in October of nineteen ninety-seven, the applicant acquired the property on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The previous property owner obtained an administrative variance, a yard modification, granted on February tenth, twenty seventeen, for a reduction of the front setback from twenty-five to twenty feet for placement of the existing mobile home. The property contains an open code enforcement case twenty, twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two fifty-seven, for the placement of two sheds without building permits, and for encroachment within the side, required side yard setbacks. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow two sheds to be located one point six feet from the eastern side of the property line, and point zero nine feet from the western property line. The exact sizes of the sheds have not been accurately determined, as the application for this variance is inconsistent with the permit application submitted in attempt to rectify the existing code violations. One of the unpermitted building shed number two is listed on the variance application as, of having a hundred and forty square feet, but the building permit submitted reflects a hundred and sixty square feet. Staff notes that a building exceeding a hundred and fifty square feet would not be subject to a three-foot side setback, as the applicant implies the building is regulated by, but would be subject to the principal side setback of ten feet. This is the future land use, the zoning, this is the aerial of the property. Special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, uh, structure or building involved, the subject property is considered vested for the development of a single-family residential purposes, the purpose, the parcel does not meet the minimum size or, or requirements, special conditions do exist as the dimensional standards for the zoning district. The special conditions and the circumstances, as described, do not result from a failure of the applicant's part to follow applicable county, state, federal codes. The parcel, of course, as stated earlier, was created in nineteen sixty-six prior to the land development code, and the non-conforming is therefore not a direct result of the action of the applicant, however, these special circumstances are not applicable to the present request for a variance, as the lack of compliance with the code is the result of the action of the, by the applicant, namely, the installation of two sheds without permits, and with, within the required side setbacks. If the applicant had sought the proper permitting for the two subject accessory buildings, the encroachment would not have passed the final inspection of, of the building. Granting of the variance request would not confer with the applicant special privilege that is denied by this code to other lands. Granting the present variance request would confer on the applicant as a special privilege that is denied by the code to other lands within the same zoning district. The encroachment of the structures into the required side setback is due to the failure of the applicant to follow the requirements of the Putnam County Code of Ordinances. The site contains sufficient area to allow proper placement of the structure outside the required setbacks. Literal interpretation of the provisions of the ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. Literal interpretation of this ordinance would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other property owners in the same zoning district. Any property within the R2 zoning district is afforded the same uses with respect to placement of accessory structures, sizes and number of accessory structures are dependent upon the area of the size, of the site due to citing impervious coverage and setback requirements of land development code. Accessory structures may be placed on the subject property in accordance with the same requirements of the land development code. The variance granted is the minimum variance that would make possible reasonable use of the land, building, or structure. The general intent of the purpose of this requirement is for the minimum side setbacks from a property lines to ensure adequate spacing of structures and buildings from adjoining properties, to ensure sufficient separation of structures, buildings, for life and fire safety reasons, and to prevent encroachments on adjoining properties and, and detrimental visual impacts on adjoining properties. The surrounding, and the surrounding neighborhood, granting of this present variance would violate the intent of the land development code forty-five dash one oh five, because the subject buildings would remain with little separation between adjoining buildings and the properties, and poses potentially detrimental visual impacts on the adjoining properties due to the proximity of the buildings to said properties. Granting of this variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this ordinance, and would not be injurious to the area involved, or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. As further explained in the report, staff finds that there is sufficient area on the property to allow compliance with the minimum required setbacks without the need of this variance. Staff finds that the requested variance does not meet the criteria required for issuance of a variance stipulated in section forty-five dash eight thirty-three point zero one of the land development code, therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance. In addition, we have received three emails from neighboring properties in opposition to this variance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from staff? Okay, if none, let's do a roll call for site visit, please.
Earl Ballingley?
I was there, and I spoke to the applicant briefly, he was talking about getting legal help with this.
Okay, he, he's mentioned you, we'll get to you in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay?
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Ed Killebrew?
Yes.
Linda Osborne?
Yes.
Longlet?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes, I, you got me.
I got you over.
I thought you did. I heard my name.
Did you say anything?
You think it was you?
I don't, I was told to shut up.
Yeah, we ought to be careful with that, don't we?
Okay, with the applicant, Robert, is it La Monaco, would you like to come forward and address this board? For the record, please state your name and address.
Robert La Monaco, 432 Cove Drive in Satsuma.
Okay, you want to discuss what?
Yeah, I, first of all, when I, when I put these sheds in, it was shortly after I moved into the property, and there were just these pre-built sheds that got delivered and, and sat there, I did not know I even needed a permit to have those there, I got a notice that there was a problem, and the problem was the setbacks, and also that the size of the property would not permit the sheds, so I needed to get rid of them, basically. It was like the, over the thirty-five percent land coverage, so, I, I had just had a survey done when I bought the property, and I looked at it and did some calculating, and found that the numbers that they were using were not correct, so I had to go to the tax assessor's office and get them to agree with my calculation, which they did, and they made a correction in the, whatever, in the computer, and that would allow the, the land coverage to have these sheds, so the only issue then was the setbacks. Then, I was kind of getting ready with getting paperwork and stuff ready for this meeting, and I got a call last week that it was going to be, the, the staff was recommending denial because the setback is a Florida State Building Code, and they said that you can't give me a variance if it's a Florida State Building Code, based on the setbacks, so, I, at this point, I don't understand, you know, what the rules are, and I just said, I, I probably need to get an attorney so that I can understand this, and because of the timing, this all happened late last week, I tried to reach an attorney, I finally got to an attorney's office on Monday, but he was too busy to be able to do anything, so, what I'm saying is, if, if in fact, it's kind of a dead issue because of the Florida State Building Codes, then, you know, I, I just wasted my time and your time even, even addressing this thing, and the five hundred dollar fee, they should have known this before we even got into the variance thing. So, at this point, I spoke to the attorney's office this morning, and they just recommended that I postpone this, if, again, if that's the case, probably until next month, so that the attorney can have time to review it all, so, I guess my position at this point is, can you give me a variance on this, or can you not, you know, if you... You know, if you, if you're legally bound to not give me a variance, then, again, we're just kind of wasting time. So, should we postpone this and I'll get the lawyer to, to look at it, or should we just go ahead with it?
Mr. Gabriel, would you like to answer that from the standpoint of the state statute and/or?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. The issue of the state statute is, is really irrelevant to this variance request. So, he was, the applicant was advised that the state statute does have minimum requirements for separation between buildings and also from property lines. However, the variance request was denied principally and actually entirely on the criteria of the variance. So, initially, the applicant had sought to submit for an administrative variance. The applicant was advised that staff could not support the administrative variance, which is a variance that's handled by staff, because staff is bound by the same criteria that the zoning board of adjustments is bound by. So, then, the applicant was advised that the other route would be to submit a variance application to the zoning board of adjustments, that that would be the only other route, short of amending the Land Development Code, which staff would never support, because the issue here is that structures were placed on the site without a building permit. The side setbacks are not substantial, they're three feet. It's very small. In fact, well, anyway, the, so, they're, they're small setbacks, and so, these structures are, if in fact they're less than 150 square feet, which we later found that one of the structures is a little greater than 150 square feet, but assuming that they are less than 150 square feet, then they would not require a building permit for just an accessory shed, it would require a zoning permit. So, that's the point, the permit that the applicant did not obtain, and that's why it was placed incorrectly on the site. The site, the site has more than adequate space to accommodate that. The issue is that, and with absolutely no judgment made on the applicant, but there is a very large RV parked on the site, this is already a very small site, and nowhere in the code does it guarantee maximum coverage of the site. In fact, this site is bound to a 35% maximum coverage. If that's correct, Wendy? Yes?
That's what I was told.
Yes, sir. So, the issue here is that the applicant does not meet the variance criteria, not that the Florida Building Code requires a three-foot separation, and that's why staff recommended denial as we had initially advised him in the initial request for an administrative variance. And we advised him we would process the request for an administrative variance, but also that he would lose the money because we had evaluated it and determined he was not, he was not qualified for it, so. That's all. Thank you, ma'am, Chair.
Another, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, there is the room there to have the proper setbacks?
That's staff's opinion, yes. I, I and the senior planner visited the site, and there is sufficient space. I mean, we're talking about, on one side, I think the building is placed at like .9 feet from the, the side setback, so he'd only have to move it 2.1 feet. That's not very much. And then, on the other side, I can't remember now, but it's, it's also not very much.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Madam Chair, if you allow it.
Okay, let him finish.
So, yes, to answer your question, staff is of the opinion that there is no hardship on the site.
Okay.
The, the code also says, I think it needs to be three feet from the house and three feet from the property line. And there's, I have the two sheds, ones on each side of the house. The lot at that point is, is very narrow, it's pie-shaped, goes down to the canal. And the, the code, I think, is three feet from the house, and having both sides covered like that, I wanted to make them four feet from the house so I'd have access to the backyard with four feet instead of three. And I can't, if I move it closer to the house, I'd have to get closer than three feet to get, in other words, there's not an extra six feet there.
You wanted a pathway between where your mobile home is sitting and where the two sheds are, to be able to go between them due to the?
What's that? I'm sorry.
I said, the way you have it set up now is that you have two sheds.
Right.
You have the mobile home in the front.
Right.
I mean, the middle.
In the middle.
And you have the large, it looks like a larger shed on the left and a smaller shed on the right.
Right.
So, you wanted to be able to go between the two sheds to get to the canal?
Between the shed and the house to get to the backyard.
So, is there, is there a rule that he has to be three feet from the house? Okay.
So, he would have to maintain that clearance. But, so, if, going back to the issue of the recreational vehicle, not that, not that that's an issue, but the recreational vehicle occupies a, an enormous part of that lot, and the structures could very well be accommodated in those areas, in staff's opinion. Of course, the applicant would have to prove this in a zoning permit, and the applicant would also not have incurred the cost of the buildings, which I'm sure is a consideration of his, if the zoning permits had been denied for reasons of noncompliance with the Land Development Code. So.
Okay, the, the RV, the lot is kind of pie-shaped, so it's, it's wider at the front by the street end. And if I move the sheds all the way to the front, there would be enough width that I could have the sheds and enough walkway and three feet at least from the sides, and I'd have to, you know, store the RV someplace else because, you know, I wouldn't be able to keep the RV on my property if I did that, because I wouldn't be able to get around them and put the RV in, in behind them.
But I have a question for you about the RV.
What's that?
I said, I have a question for you about the RV. How would you possibly be able to move it? There's a power pole in front of it.
Oh, yeah, I, I got it in there.
Got it in there with the trailer and, and the power pole there? I said, you got that RV backed in with the power pole there and the, and the mobile home there.
The RV is the motor home.
Right, the RV, the motor home.
Yeah, yeah.
You must be Houdini.
It's there.
It's there, I wondered, okay, how's he, how's he going to get it out?
It's fair, it's big, but it's fairly maneuverable, and, you know, it took me like...
Does it bend in the middle?
What's that? It took me a couple of tries, but I was able to get in it. I, I did request for the electric company to move the pole because it's like blocking, but they said no. So, anyway. So, my choice is, if I, if I can't get the variance, I mean, I could move the sheds a foot closer to the house, to three feet, and it, I mean, it's not a big deal to move them, and that would get me a little bit more. Or I can move them, if I need to get the three feet from the house and three feet from the property line, I would have to move the sheds toward the street and get rid of the motor home.
Towards the street? What about toward the canal? I mean, we didn't, I didn't go behind to look at the canal.
No, it gets narrower toward the canal. No, and it goes down the hill, they, they can't go back further.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
You just, my whole mind was thinking there when you said get rid of the motor home. I mean, I don't, if you've got a motor home, you may be financially able to do this, but a lot of people take their RVs and what have you and put them into these storage lots.
Yeah, I could do that, you know, or I can sell it, you know.
That was just an idea.
My, my position is, this is my yard, and I want to put the RV there, and, you know, I'm saying the shed is, one of them is, I think, 1.6 feet from the property line, and the other one is just like .9 feet or something. The neighbors' properties on both sides are larger properties. My lot is one of the smallest around, and those larger properties have sheds that have, apparently, been there for a long time, but they're closer to my property line than my sheds are. So, it's not like I'm irritating those neighbors or something. And you mentioned that there were some emails, three different people?
We had three from your neighbors.
Can I find out who or why or what, what their objection is?
Yes, sir, you, you may either inspect them here, or we can send you copies of those as a public records.
Yeah, can I? Can I look at that right now, and I, I just?
Certainly. Wendy would be happy to give you a copy of them.
I'll tell you what, the buildings on either side of his property look like they're almost backed right up against his sheds.
Well, the issue was brought up about the adjoining properties on both sides, in that those buildings look like, I mean, they're probably right up against the fence, but were those buildings placed prior to the?
Setback.
Setback requirements, or they just have been there so long that nobody said anything? Yeah.
You mean the buildings? Oh, God.
Yes, they were, both of them. I believe I put in the report, they were from the early 90, one was 1988 and one was 1990.
They both look like they're almost next to his sheds.
Right, but if for some reason any of those structures have 50% or more damage or are taken down, they would have to now meet current code.
Now meet the code.
And as a clarification on the setbacks, if...
Except they're getting the advantage of being able to do it, and he's not.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your discussion.
Out of turn anyway.
He was talking.
What's that?
He was talking out of turn anyway.
Madam Chair, if I may, the, so, I want to stress the point again that it's three feet if the structure's 150 square feet or less. If one of them is over 150 square feet, when he submits for his zoning permit, we will require a building permit, and that setback would be 10 feet. So, there may be a possi, unless that one structure that appears to be larger than the 150 square feet is somehow reduced, it would have to be probably removed from the site because he could never, the applicant could never meet that setback. But again, that would have been caught at the building permit stage or the zoning permit stage.
My, my point with the neighbors' sheds being closer than mine is that my sheds being there are not like making the neighborhood look ugly or anything. The sheds are, you know, if you've seen them, they're nice sheds, they look nice. The only issue is, you know, the, a couple of feet on the sidelines, so.
Well, the issue has also that there's new, new codes that were in, in, put into place after, after those other sheds were on the building, so.
Yeah, I'm not saying that those sheds should be torn down, I'm saying...
Well, no, then, you don't, we can't, so. Okay, Mr. Gabriel, I have a question for you. If these sheds are able to be moved, can the sheds be moved closer together, or do they have to maintain the three-feet distance from each shed?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. They would have to maintain, any structure would have to maintain a three-foot distance from each other.
Right, okay.
So, from the mobile home to the sheds.
From the mobile home, from both sheds.
Yes, ma'am.
From, from the sideline and from each other or any other building?
And the back of the mobile home.
No, not the mobile home, I don't think.
Yes, you would have to maintain clearance from the mobile home.
Oh, the mobile home, the house.
The house, the mobile home, house.
One without the...
One and the other. And he's talking about moving them to the front. I didn't see room enough to put one in the front, but you also have a car, whatever it is, a car tow that's there in the front?
The car?
The car, they, isn't that a, like a car tow or something like that? What do you call it?
Oh, there's a, there's a boat trailer on one side, which I'm probably going to get rid of that.
But then, there's also a tow thing.
Tow thing, tow dolly for the, for the motor home.
Tow dolly, or whatever you want to call it, in front. So, I didn't see any place that you could put one shed in the front.
So, the applicant, or, and I should say the owner, because they're the same, the owner would have to find some way to move the items on the, on the site, and it may result in some of them having to be removed from the site. It's simply just a very small lot.
Very small. So, he could possibly move the small one? Well, he'd have to move the big one to get the small one out of there.
Well, they can be moved, you know, the, the company that made them, they have a machine that just picks it up and moves it around.
But that would be another thing to, to, to deal with because he's asking for a variance, and that has nothing to do with moving, unless he did move the sheds totally, then he wouldn't have to have the variance, so.
Correct, and that's what we base our denial on, on the fact that he can either move them, and, and there would be sufficient space if some of the items on the site would be removed, or if it's not feasible on the site because of the small, small, excuse me, smallness of the site, we again go back to that, there's no hardship on the site, there's no topographical issue on the site that would prevent siting of accessory structures, he still has the ability to cite those on there, but concurrent with the size of the lot, just as anyone else would have to mind the size of their lot.
But today, we're only here for, to consider the variance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. La Monaco? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. So, what, what, what happens now?
Well, somebody will, will make a motion or do something in a few minutes, and you will know what's going to happen.
Oh, okay.
Okay? We will make a decision today.
I do have a question.
Okay, you have a question.
Of the applicant, I wouldn't dare to butcher your name.
La Monica.
There, in one of these letters to us, it says, it also appears the homeowner has had electrical run to the sheds. This needs to be looked into. Unless I'm mistaken, a permit should have been pulled for the electrical, and it's close to the water. A question of validity of the sheds being used as sheds. They have the potential to be used as guest homes, as are done in RV campgrounds.
Okay, there's an extension cord running to the sheds because they have lights in there so I could see.
So, you don't have any, any power?
No, there's no, no permanent power.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask the question. There's no one in the audience, but is anyone wishing to come forward and speak in favor? Or anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition? As I said, there's no one else left in the audience, so therefore, no one is coming forward. So, at this time, we will close the, just meeting up to the public, and then we will open it up for motion and discussion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we deny variance 21-004 as the variance does not meet the criteria required by Section 45-833 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, and authorize the chairman to sign the final order.
Second.
We have a motion and second to deny variance 21-004. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, motion carries. There is a 30-day, motion carries 5-0. However, there is a 30-day appeal process, so if you need to continue, then please follow your own instincts. And then, if you have some other questions, I'm sure staff will be more than willing to work with you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing, any old business, any new business?
Minutes.
The next thing is the minutes for August 18th, 2021. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Root approved, second.
And we have a motion to, and a second to approve, August 18th, 2021 meeting. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I guess we stand adjourned. How about a motion, just to be official?
Motion on protest.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you.